Thank you. Thank Councilman. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Stephen Wilson of 15th Street Baptist Church. The pastor is here today as the guest of Councilman Alan Dom. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise. Pastor?
Good morning.
Morning.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, God of all glory. We come because we know you to be a God who answers prayers. We come before you because we understand that apart from you, we can do nothing that is meaningful, nothing that is everlasting. We invite your presence into this place. We pray right now that you would fill this place with your presence. We pray for such a time as this. We need your wisdom. We need your strength. We need your power. Open our eyes that we might see solutions to the problems that we find before us. Open our ears that once again, we may hear the clarion call of Malcolm. Once again, we may embrace the dreams of Martin. Once again, we may move in the spirit of Dr. Henry Moskowitz. We need you, oh great Jehovah. We need you right here and right now to lift us up. Lift us up above our mortal concerns. Lift us up above our pride, our prejudice, our partisanship, and bring us to a place of unity. Help us to shape and fashion and make this city what it ought to be. We pray right now in the matchless name of Jesus the Christ. Amen and amen.
Thank you Pastor. Council will be at ease. Thank you for those inspiring words Pastor. We genuinely appreciate it. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting, Thursday, February 21st, 2019. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 21st, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 21st, 2019. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair thanks the gentleman. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair thanks the gentleman. At this time, I would like to dispense with our regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness the government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here to witness what we do here in City Council. And again, thank you, and please feel free to come back whenever you have time. We really appreciate you being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution honoring Philadelphia's living legends with Joan Myers-Brown, Grace Clark on behalf of Stanley Clark, great family member, if I say so myself, Bill Jolly, and Solomon Jones, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilmen at the podium. And joining the folks at the podium, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Johnson, and Councilwoman Bass, and also Councilman Derek Green.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We're gonna wake up in here. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
There we go. Little energy, because the people behind me have a lot of energy, and they want to share it with you today. Today is February 28th. It is the last day in the shortest month on the calendar. It is also Black History Month. And I want you to know that before I go into the Carter G. Woodson Park, why Black History Month is important to me and little boys and girls throughout the city of Philadelphia is because of my great-grandfather, William O. Spencer. Now, as a kid, he was from South Philly too. Yeah. And from the P. He, we as kids, used to play in my grandfather's basement. And he had a wood shop, and one of the favorite things for the grandkids to find was a saber. It was a sword. It was like you could get hurt. And we would grab a pipe and grab a sword, and we would clang the things together. My grandmother would have had a fit had she known what we were doing. But I had no idea what that saber was from or for. And at the time, when you watched cowboy movies and stuff like that, the role of the African-American men and women were diminished roles. We were the cook. We were the butler. We were the guy who handed the general the sword. And in my mind, that's who my grandfather was, until I read his obituary, until I understood that he was a rough rider, until I understood that he went up those hills himself. He was not the cook. He was the soldier at the front line and was a hero after that to me. But I am but one of tens of thousands of Philadelphia young people who probably had that same opinion about their ancestors, not knowing the truth of their contributions. So Carter G. Woodson understood that too. And he was an African-American historian, author, journalist, convinced that the role of his own people in American history was diminished. The history of other cultures were also being ignored, but he realized he needed to do the research to make sure that our place in history was memorialized. And so here today, the evolution of that going from a week to a month to our own is here today. We have to recognize people in our culture, in our city, that have made not just local contributions, but international contributions that will ripple throughout international history. And we are proud of you, and we're here to tell you that today.
Thank you.
All right? So what we want to do is propose this resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends. Joan Myers-Brown, Stanley Clark, Bill Jolly, my neighbor, and Solomon Jones, who ain't no hustler. That's an inside joke he gave a speech. It was a line he used. It was good. So I told him I was always gonna remember. These are people who communicate in dance, music, literature, journalism, throughout Philadelphia and then historically throughout our nation.
No, the personal privilege, but for this lady to my left, forty years ago, when I was thirty pounds thinner, she gave me an opportunity to live my dream as a professional dancer. Because in her time as a black ballerina, she didn't have the opportunity to exhibit her craft. She has created thousands of dancers across the nation that go onto Broadway and Vegas and travel around the world. So I am eternally grateful to this woman by the name of Joan Myers-Brown. Whereas Joan Myers-Brown has made significant contributions to the national and international dance communities. She's the founder of the Philadelphia Dance Company, affectionately known as Philidanco, and the founder of the Philadelphia School of Dance Arts. In 1988, Brown founded the International Conference of Black Dance Companies, and just a few years later, founded the International Association of Blacks in Dance. And... Whereas Brown has received a host of accolades throughout her lifetime, including awards from the Philadelphia Tribune, the African-American Museum in Philadelphia, and membership to the Distinguished Daughters of Pennsylvania, which is a humbling honor and a huge deal in the Commonwealth. In 2012, she was designated as one of the ten best Philadelphians by Philadelphia Magazine and received the National Medal of the Arts, the nation's highest civic honor for artistic excellence, which was presented to her by none other at the White House than President Barack Obama. And...
Whereas Stanley Clark is a four-time Grammy winner, winning recording artist, performer, composer, conductor, arranger, and producer, as well as one of the most eminent figures in the world of acoustic and electric basses. Clark's esteemed presence in the music industry was celebrated when he was named Rolling Stone Magazine's very first Jasmine of the Year. And...
And he's the president's cousin.
Absolutely. And originally from North Philadelphia.
And you know, not to go back, but they're getting ready to build a school in Joan Myers-Brown's honor. So that's gonna be a special, special gift to us as well. Whereas Clark is also the recipient of Bass Player's Magazine's Lifetime Achievement Award, is a member of the Guitar Players Magazine's Gallery of Greats, and has been honored with the addition of his hand impressions to Hollywood's quote-unquote "rock walk." To ensure that other young, talented artists can follow in his legacy, he established the Stanley Clark Foundation, a charitable organization which awards scholarships to aspiring musicians each year. And...
Whereas Bill Jolly is a three-time Emmy Award-winning composer, arranger, musical director, and keyboardist. Jolly's compositions have been featured across the airway on major networks like NBC, ABC, CBS, MTV, HBO, and Showtime. And he went to Overbook, Kurt just told me. And he has appeared in endorsement ads for major companies such as Verizon, Hyatt, and Bose. And...
Whereas Bill Jolly has also used his talents in directing large-scale award ceremonies, including the Emmy Awards, the Marion Anderson Awards, and the Rhythm and Blues Foundation Awards. In addition, he has arranged musical tributes to Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, Billy Joel, Queen Latifah, Bon Jovi, Nina Simone, and Chaka Khan, and has performed musically for five U.S. Presidents. And...
Whereas Solomon Jones is an essence, bestselling author, and award-winning journalist who has been featured nationally on NPR's Morning Edition and CNN's Headline News. Jones is currently a columnist for the Philadelphia Daily News and a host for Praise 107.9. In addition, he's a blogger and frequent on-air commentator for the NPR affiliate WHYY. And...
Whereas an instructor at the Philadelphia School District Parent University, Jones has served as spokesman for the District Read for Your Life Program. Jones has also served on the Board of the Philadelphia Committee to End Homelessness, visited each of Philadelphia's municipal prisons to promote reading, and served on the Community Advisory Board of the DOFUND, an organization that helps homeless men reclaim their lives.
Whereas, all of these living legends, in great and diverse ways, have positively impacted the city of Philadelphia via the enrichment of Philadelphia's culture, through the arts, through the mentorship of Philadelphia youth, and the provision of valuable information to our citizens. These living legends have and continue to make the lives of Philadelphia citizens better. Now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and celebrates Philadelphia's living legends, Joan Myers-Brown, Stanley Clark, Bill Jolly, and Solomon Jones, who are leaders in the areas of dance, music, literature, and journalism in the Philadelphia area, as part of the commemoration of Black History Month. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to every one of our living legends as further evidence of the sincere respect and admiration of our legislative body. Thank you.
And the Chair recognizes Joan Myers-Brown, Grace Clark, Bill Jolly, and Solomon Jones for remarks.
Well, anyone that knows me, anytime they ask me to speak, I say, "I wish they had asked me to dance." But now that I've gotten a little older, I guess I have to say something. First of all, I'd like to thank Blondel for being a wonderful dancer and a wonderful City Councilwoman. You know, the arts in Philadelphia sometimes get pushed aside and not accomplished and accounted for, but what we do, we do all year long, not just Black History Month, not just every week. So we invite you to support us even more, support our youth, and make sure that the arts continue. The vote today for the school, I'm not worried about the school being in my name, I'm worried about the school happening. So we want to make sure the schools continue to do their work and that the new school, that the vote will be for it, and that we can move on. So I thank you, and I thank you on behalf of everyone in Philadelphia that has benefited from the arts, because it has to continue. Thank you.
Don't everybody come up at once.
Good morning. I wanted to say thank you so much for honoring my brother. He couldn't be here today, but I know that he's extremely grateful and thankful with your gratitude, and I'm so proud of him. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am so honored by this award today that I almost had to check the spelling to make sure this wasn't meant for Billy Joel. I'm very thankful, first of all, to God, secondly, to my mother, Rowena Jolly, my father, Elton Jolly, and my daughter Bianca Jolly. Those are the inspirations of my life. And I want to thank my good friend and my neighbor, Curtis Jones. He doesn't know, but I used to watch him back at Overbrook High School when he was in student government, and I should see him get up and speak and then watch the women chasing down the hall. So... So naturally, when it became my chance, I became the president of the school, thanks to him. Thank you so much, and would very much appreciate this award.
Well, thank you so much for this award. It's interesting, when I was listening to them read my bio, they read the parts about me working on behalf of homelessness. And I do that because I rose out of homelessness to become who I am, to work in this Philadelphia City Council, to work for a Congressman of the United States, and to realize my dream of becoming a journalist. I love this city because its streets shaped me. I love this city because this is where I live and raise my family. I love this city because it has taught me so much. And as I watch members of City Council, sometimes I'm on you, and y'all know that, right? But if you're doing the right thing, I'm with you, because I love this city, because this city is my family. And so Councilman Jones, I'm with you when you fight against prisons. Councilwoman Blackwell, I'm with you when you fight for the homeless. Councilwoman Bass, I'm with you when you fight against the tax abatement. Councilwoman Parker, I'm with you when you fight against a marijuana facility. Councilwoman Gimm, I'm with you when you fight for Fair Work Week. Councilman Clark, I'm with you when you fight to make sure that black developers actually get to develop properties in gentrifying communities here in Philadelphia. Councilman O., I'm with you when you fight for homeowners' rights. Councilwoman Sanchez, I'm with you when you fight to get people out of addiction, because that is where I come from, and you never know who these people are going to become. And so I want to thank you so much, not only for honoring me, but honoring where I come from, in this city of Philadelphia, and all the people who are gonna rise up to be so much more than I will ever be. Thank you.
Thank you. Council will be at ease. Thank you, and congratulations to our living legends. I'd like to go off script a little bit and take a moment to recognize one of our own, who's been a longtime member of the City Council family, Joyce McKean, the Veterans Coordinator. Stand up, Joyce. Always shy, but always putting the work in. And she's retiring after thirty-five years in City Council. Where did you start, when you were like five? Because y'all know you're only like forty, what, thirty-nine or something? We're the same age? Good comeback, you know? Yeah, but Joyce, she spent, of those thirty-five years, thirty-one of those were working for the Veterans Advisory Commission. And I see we have some of our members of the military here, and I want to thank them so much for their service, for making sure that we stay safe and we continue to be able to practice democracy in the way that we do. I actually see a commission member here. Couple, yeah, thank you. So Joyce actually was here since 1984. And she started out working for Al Perlman, the councilman, way, way back. I didn't know that. But Joyce, we just want to say, on behalf of the City Council and its family, we really appreciate what you've done, not only your commitment to City Council and the citizens, but more importantly, your commitment to our wonderful, wonderful members of the service. You've been great, you'll be missed, but I'm sure that you'll be coming back and volunteering and telling Carlo and Wanda, "Look, keep a space for me, because I'm gonna come in. I'm still gonna collect my pension, but I'm gonna come in." All right, Joyce, thank you so much, and we genuinely appreciate it. Thank you. So awesome. Okay. Our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on February 27, 2019, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at a session on February 14, 2019. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance constituting the Twenty-Second Supplemental Ordinance to the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committed to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19, 1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax to clarify the definition of "value." And an ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a concession agreement with Love Luck for the design, construction, management, and operation of a food and beverage concession in the Fairmount Park Welcome Center in John F. Kennedy Plaza, also known as Love Park. And an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of Subcode A of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, entitled Fees, to further provide for administrative fees in connection with accelerated review of various permit applications, and to establish a special surcharge in connection with such accelerated reviews, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional communication?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds- And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have two privileged resolutions, one non-privileged resolutions, and one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance constituting the 22nd Supplemental Ordinance to the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds. And a privileged resolution hereby proclaiming March 2019 as Social Work Month and encouraging all Philadelphians to support the social work profession.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Lynn Carter for her momentous induction into the Pennsylvania Boxing Hall of Fame.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional free simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 44th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner and Procurement Commissioner to enter into a concession agreement with Love Luck for the design, construction, management, and operation of a food and beverage concession in the Fairmount Park Welcome Center in John F. Kennedy Plaza, also known as Love Park.
Further to committee, chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have introduced one bill and one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing no truck parking regulation on both sides of Torrsdale Avenue from Linden Avenue to Ron Street, and both sides of Magarkey Street from Torrsdale Avenue to Frankfurt Avenue.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution declaring the City of Philadelphia a hidden hero in, hidden hero city in recognition of the important work and vital role of military and veteran caregivers in the city.
Next week's calendar, chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One privileged resolution and one bill. The privileged resolution is signed on by, I believe, all members of City Council.
Thank you, Councilman.
Co-sponsored by Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Jim Marino on the occasion of his retirement after decades of dedicated service to the Department of Parks and Recreation and as director of the Broad Street Run.
Today's calendar.
And an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees' Retirement Code by amending various provisions to provide for purchase of service by certain classes of employees.
Further to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill on behalf of the administration and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, entitled Fees, to further provide for administrative fees in connection with accelerated review of various permit applications, and to establish a special surcharge in connection with such accelerated reviews.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 250 West Thayer Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar, chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have absolutely no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Thank you, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill for today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by reducing the amount of real estate taxes to be exempted for certain improvements to or construction of certain residential, commercial, industrial, or other business properties, and by reducing the duration of such exemptions.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the state legislature and governor to recognize the authority and efforts of Pittsburgh City Council members to protect citizens from acts of gun violence through common sense gun legislation following the massacre of the, at the Tree of Life synagogue.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
I have no bills or resolutions today, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution declaring March 1, 2019, as Disability Day, a mourning in the City of Philadelphia to raise awareness of felicity that of disabled children and adults.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill, one non-privileged, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax to clarify the definition of "value."
Further to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Larry Friedman for his tireless dedication to the City of Philadelphia and especially the Northern Liberties Neighborhood.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to grant more local control for the operation of the right-of-way, the installation of roadway features, to effectively enforce speed limits, and the implementation of policies that discourage dangerous driving.
Next week's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. No bills, no resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Johnson, did you have?
Council President, no bills and no resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And with that, the next order of business is our reports from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 180515, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 14303 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Common Procedures and Requirements, to amend requirements regarding neighborhood notice and meetings. And Bill Number 181064, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts, by amending the CDO, Central Delaware Riverfront Overlay District, to revise provisions relating to river access streets. And Bill Number 190001, entitled An Ordinance to amend the master plan for Drexel University and to approve the proposed addition to 101 North 34th Street. And Bill Number 190016, entitled An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Stenton Avenue, Chelton Avenue, Broad Street, Windham Avenue, Bellfield Avenue, and Worcester Street. And Bill Number 190058, entitled An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Burke Street, Memphis Street, Wilt Street, and Tulip Street. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180515, 181064, 190001, 190016, and 190058.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to amendment first reading this day of Bills Number 180515, 181064, 109001, and 190016, and 190058. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred Bill Number 190006, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Transfers and Appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the grants revenue fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190006.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the rule of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 19006. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee of Transportation and Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, to which is referred Bill Number 181063, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation, Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and the Commissioner of Public Property, on behalf of the City of Philadelphia, to enter into certain transactions and contracts regarding a liquefied natural gas project on property and facilities owned by the City of Philadelphia and operated by the Philadelphia Gas Works, including certain leases and licenses and contracts related to the purchase of natural gas. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Bill Number 181063 will be placed on our first reading calendar at the next session of Council. That concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just read with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of Council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Bill Numbers 170247, 190123. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Okay. Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions that are on the final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium there. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, call the first name on the list.
Harry Barnum.
I hand over the microphone to my voice for the interpreter. Good morning, committee. My name is Harry Barnum. I'm a deaf advocate with the city, around the city of Philadelphia. I do have a question on Number 170408, which has been postponed for many, many months. And I don't understand what's happening with that. What's going on with Council? Is there going to be a vote? Are we going to talk about the schools and what's happening with suspending of young children? This has been on the books for a very long time, on the agenda for a long time. Are we taking this seriously? Is there a way this can be voted? I just put this out there for you all, and I would like to know what's happening with that particular bill. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Judith Palkin-Miller. Commenting on 190074.
My name is Judith Eleanor Palkin-Miller. And I'm basing my three minutes on 190074, the scouts. I'm actually speaking for future voters, the boys and girls in our city of Philadelphia. And I'm going to say good morning, good afternoon, Council, and anyone sitting on that side of the rail. And I'm going to say good morning, good afternoon to anyone sitting on this side of the rail that still believes in a democratic society. I'm going to talk a little bit about what happened last week when I heard someone bring up the term limit bill presented last Thursday. I hope it's not going to be politics as general in the city of Philadelphia. I never thought I would address Council. But after last week, when I felt the frustration of the two individuals who came into the room interrupting the start of the council meeting, I felt I had a need to speak. Who is their councilperson? They needed a voice and felt that their voice wasn't being heard, so that was the only way to be heard by disrupting the session. I am proposing that the limit bill be put on the May 21st ballot for the people of Philadelphia to decide. Or even better, if you are not being challenged, then the ballot should have your name and, next to it, I do not reelect this person. Give your constituents a voice, a choice. They can either vote you in or vote you out. Let the people of Philadelphia decide. Show the people of Philadelphia that you actually represent them, not politics as usual in Philadelphia. I have a question for each and every one of you. Why are we one of the major cities in, in the United States that don't impose municipal council limit terms? Why is that? Can't you feel the frustration of the city? Are you really that oblivious to your constituents? I don't understand the opposition to term limit bills. I think the longer some, the longer some council members stay in office, the easier it is for you to make some poor choices because you think you can. And I'm going to refer to the Sunday Inquirer article. You do things and you're not held accountable. I don't understand that. And here's another thought. If you haven't been able to change the city in two or three terms, don't you think it's time for you to step aside and let someone else try to make a change? Let the people of Philadelphia know that you represent them, not yourselves. Pass the term limit bill or put it on the ballot. Let the people of Philadelphia make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Asia Beach. Commenting on a resolution introduced today by Councilman Tobinberger.
Hi. Thank you so much.
Morning.
My name is Asia Beach. And good morning, Council people and everyone in attendance today. I'm honored and humbled to be speaking to you. My name is Asia Beach, and I was born with clubbed feet. As a child, I spent years in and out of wheelchairs while being treated at Shriners Hospital As a child, I spent years in and out of wheelchairs while being treated at Shriners Hospital for Children, an organization that provides necessary operations for children of families that could not otherwise afford it. I also raised a son with autism. Too often, people with disabilities are not listened to. It can feel as if you are pulled into a riptide, deep into the depths of the ocean, where screams turn into air, the voices of people with disabilities becoming drowned out, as if we do not deserve to have autonomy in any decision. We need to be heard. People with disabilities, and especially children with disabilities, are far more likely to experience assaults than any non-disabled person. According to the World Health Organization, children with disabilities are four times more likely to experience any kind of violence. The Rutterman Foundation estimates that as many as two children with disabilities are murdered every week in the United States. As it is in many oppressive and abusive relationships, the aggressor will blame the victim for the violence. Unfortunately, when people with disabilities are assaulted and even murdered by caregivers, there is a larger narrative that excuses that violence, implying a person with a disability is either too burdensome or that killing them is somehow an act of mercy. I sincerely thank Councilman Tobinberger for bringing more awareness to Disability Day of Mourning and violence against those with disabilities, and I thank all of Philadelphia City Council that voted unanimously on this resolution last year declaring March 1st as Disability Day of Mourning in Philadelphia to raise the awareness of filicide and the murders by caregivers of children and adults with disabilities. There are many things Philadelphia City Council can continue to do over the years to reduce filicide and increase autonomy for people with disabilities. Some of these things are recognizing when crimes against people with disabilities should be classified as hate crimes and speaking out against them in our communities. Ensuring housing in districts you represent have a fair number that are truly accessible, meaning physically accessible for those with varying needs, and financially accessible for those living on social security. Working to make our school buildings more accessible and healthier for all children, and making all Philadelphia public transit truly accessible so that more people with disabilities can go to and from doctor's appointments and jobs in a self-reliant way as they are comfortably able to do so. In closing, the most important thing all of us can do is to lead with love and kindness in the face of difference. Thank you so much for your time today, and I hope you will all vote on the resolution Disability Day of Mourning today, recognizing tomorrow, March 1st, as Disability Day of Mourning, and that you will all join us in the caucus room tomorrow at noon to commemorate the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Denahell. Commenting on 160720 and 190027.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people, and remandamis quo而后o, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. Just like Dr. King protested, I am the man. My 42 USC 1982 property rights are the same as all the people clearly designated as beneficiaries of the constitutional contracts. Our council, mayor, governor, and others using RDA and Lamb Bank and other agencies to eyeball the people's private property to figure out the best use. Communism, socialism, and fascism do not care about private property rights. You have no property rights. Fortunately, Article 4, Section 4, requires the federal government guarantee a republican form of government. Clearly, oath violating officials require prosecution before this chaos of stealing homes in Philadelphia gets worse. Can a first-class city treat its people like second-class citizens? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 USC 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 USC 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26, PACSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations. I guess not today. To investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 USC 1982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-of-law government must have its charter government revoke until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitutional law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. We will now continue with our calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 170247.
A resolution urging the United States Federal Trade Commission to delay the merger of Rite Aid Corporation with Walgreens Boots Alliance until the impact of the merger is fully disclosed to the citizens of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution Number 170247 be withdrawn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170247 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 190123.
A resolution calling on the administration to commit to increasing funding for FY20 to grow the number of youth employed during the summer months.
Chair again recognizes, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190123 is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution hereby proclaiming March 2019 as Social Work Month and encouraging all Philadelphians to support the social work profession introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
I move for the adoption, Mr. President.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Lynn Carter for her momentous induction into the Pennsylvania Boxing Hall of Fame introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Jim Marino on the occasion of his retirement after decades of dedicated service to the Department of Parks and Recreation and his director of the Broad Street Run introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring March 1st, 2019, as Disability Day of Mourning in the city of Philadelphia to raise awareness of filicide, that of disabled children and adults, introduced by Councilman Tobinberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Thank you. Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Larry Friedman for his tireless dedication to the city of Philadelphia and especially the Northern Liberties Neighborhood introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our speeches. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Are there any speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to offer a friendly reminder to my colleagues and our staff that this is our seventh annual celebration of African-American History Month, and today we will be lifting up and celebrating Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, the first African-American woman elected to the United States Congress. That'll be followed by song, music, and of course, dance from Philidanco, and then a delicious soul food meal. Thank you, Mr. President. We want to invite all of the staff downstairs.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for approving the resolution calling on the administration to increase summer job slots for 2019. As we approach budget, as we approach the hearings to review the anti-violence plan that was put forth by the mayor, a key component is youth summer jobs. We have, I believe, 11,000 slots, and that's not, that's not bad. That's good work. It's good budget work. But there are 18,000 requests by young people to fill those slots. So that, I went to public school, but that, that means 7,000 young people will go without a job this summer. I think that is a good investment on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to increase the amount of jobs, to reduce the amount of violence. Often, a summer job for a young person is a first job for a young person. Gives them an opportunity to be in a workplace and learn workplace norms like being on time, being polite, how much of a job you may not want to have later on in life, and why you need to go to school not to have it. But if they are idle during the summer, if they're left to their own devices during the summer, to some degree, it is our fault. So we need to, as my colleague says, step up to the plate and find the gap of those 7,000 slots. Urban League and Urban Coalition and our friends over at Coalition do their part to raise private sector money, but we have to find it, we have to dig deep, because the investment in that $100 a week, it takes $100 a day to incarcerate. So do the math. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, Mr. President, our colleague, Councilman Derek Green, alluded to the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development and a hearing that was held by the committee on February the 19th to examine Power Up Your Business, a free business training program created by the Community College of Philadelphia. I wanted to just note today, Mr. President, that the program was developed in 2016 in collaboration with Dr. Guy Generals and CCP as a result of the discussion about the beverage tax. One of the most common refrains during the beverage tax debate was that it could hurt neighborhood small businesses in low-income communities, so we wanted to find ways to support and reinforce those type of businesses. The initial funding for Power Up was $2.4 million for three years. That was an $800,000 funding level per year. Future funding will be subject to budget negotiations this year. We wanted to add that Power Up is unique because it focuses primarily on businesses located on commercial quarters and smaller businesses. They can have more than $1 million in annual revenue, and it focuses on those micro and small businesses who have been getting by on a wing and a prayer without much guidance. Power Up includes a 12-week, 36-hour peer-based learning experience as well as a series of workshops that entrepreneurs can attend. We officially launched in 2017, and Power Up has helped hundreds of small businesses in every council district and nearly every zip code in our city. So far, 120 businesses have completed the 10-week peer-based cohort. Additionally, 806 people have attended the storefront workshop series, and 529 business owners have attended the community and partnership workshops. More than 84% of the participants have been people of color, and nearly 71% Councilwoman Reynolds Brown have been women. Today, you will find on your desk a black bag, this for my colleagues, that says Power Up Your Business on the outside, and inside the bag are a variety of informational materials related to the program. I want my district colleagues to know that inside each of your respective bags, you will very specifically find a bag that includes testimony and/or letters of support from small businesses located in your respective districts who have been through the program. Finally, I must mention that Community College is currently accepting applications for its next Power Up Your Business cohort at its northeast campus. Applications are due by March the 29th. I hope you will all promote this opportunity, and as a city that wants to be a pro-growth, pro-neighborhood, and pro-business city, Power Up Your Business is essential because it reaches into neighborhoods, which are the veins of our great city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Great program. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a minute to address two issues that we've been working on this past week that are very significant. One, I want to take a moment to acknowledge my partner in the area of juvenile justice, Councilman Helen Gimm, for arriving in city council and stepping up to the plate and addressing the issue of juvenile justice. She has made sure that we put on the forefront some of the abuse of the children who are sent to Glenn Mills. She has stayed on the case when it comes to holding the leadership at Glenn Mills Schools accountable. Our primary purpose of sending our young people there is for treatment and rehabilitation, and they should not come out of Glenn Mills worse off than how they have gone into Glenn Mills and so, and working in partnership with Councilwoman Helen Gimm, holding DHS Commissioner Figueroa accountable in this process, as well as tomorrow, working in partnership with Helen Gimm, the call on the state to do an investigation into Glenn Mills, the whole operation, but most importantly, the city of Philadelphia shouldn't even be doing business with Glenn Mills. And so, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge her because she stayed on the case. I worked with her, with her task force, but nevertheless, at the end of the day, we aren't keeping our children safe, and we aren't providing a bright future for them, then what's the purpose of the job that we're doing day to day? And so, just want to take a moment to acknowledge my colleague Helen Gimm because she definitely deserves to be acknowledged for this particular work. But also, you know, and I've been doing this work for about 10 years in the state house as a state representative, and now as a councilperson, and I enjoy the work that I'm doing, but you also have significant bright spots when we do this work. You know, and my district and Councilman, Mark Squilla's district, has been terrorized over this last week by a creep who decided to prey on women. And all throughout social media, all throughout my inboxes, whether it's Facebook, or Instagram, or telephones to my office, not only just from women, but also men who are terrorized that a sexual predator was going through the neighborhood assaulting women. But I'm proud that the citizens of South Philadelphia, the citizens of the city of Philadelphia stepped up to the plate, provided the needed video surveillance coverage to the Philadelphia Police Department, as well as the tips needed for the Philadelphia Police Department to get this creep off the street. I'm hoping our district attorney, Lavi Krasner, pushed this guy under the jail. But it's a bright spot for me because we came together as a city and showed that we can unify around an issue to make sure our women are safe. And we found out that beyond the initial reported assaults that were reported to the Philadelphia Police Department, there may be other individuals.
We'll make note of your aye vote as we enter into the budget season, sir. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and majority, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we move to a motion to adjourn, I appeal to my colleagues to stay with us, staff to join us as we celebrate Black History Month. And with that, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 7, 2019 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 7, 2019 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.